Trustee Anthony.
President.
Trustee Graham Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
The record reflect the Clerk Seagrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I'm here.
Supervisor Williams.
Good evening. We'd like to call for a motion to adopt the agenda with one slight adjustment, and that is deletion of item G5. Then also just to note, there was some verbiage change in G4 and G6 that which was shared with the board prior to the meeting. So if I could have a motion to adopt the agenda with the deletion of item G5, please.
Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the agenda with the elimination of item G5.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Call for a motion to approve the minutes of December 12, 2017.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of December 12, 2017, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we have a very, very special presentation. We have a few team members here this evening from the American Public Works Association. With them, leading them this evening is Rich Benning, who is the Region Five Director, Tom Treese, the APWA Michigan Representative, and John Thompson, APWA, also a second representative from the state of Michigan. Rich, would you please approach the podium and share with us the good news?
Thank you Supervisor Williams. As I said, I'm Rich Benning, and I'm the Region Five Director for APWA, the American Public Works Association. So on behalf of President Bo Mills of the American Public Works Association and the 30,000 members of the American Public Works Association, I'm here to present an accreditation to the township of Canton. And you are one of 135 communities that have received this particular award, and you have worked hard to get it. It's a mark of professionalism indicating that the agency has made the commitment to continuous improvement in the delivery of public works operations and services in the community that it serves. Accreditation recognizes an agency's policies, procedures, and practices which have been evaluated against nationally recognized practices determined to be appropriate for that specific agency. It began in 1995 with the city of Greeley, Colorado, becoming the first agency to receive this designation in 1997. It's important to agencies seeking a method to demonstrate that is well managed, able to demonstrate compliance with recommended practices, and dedicated to continuous improvement of public works facilities and services. This continuous improvement, I happen to be a Edwards Deming disciple, if you're familiar with his 14 principles. I see Supervisor Williams nodding.
Automotive, you live it, breathe it.
There you are. And, you know, Edwards Deming took that continuous improvement idea to the Japanese back way back after the war, and some of the people here in the United States was, we were somewhat fat, dumb, and happy, but we are now into that continuous improvement, so. But the agencies first complete a self-assessment and make improvements to their operations and management policies and procedures following an established public works management publication manual. We're now in our eighth edition. It involves a review of the goals established by that agency and an onsite accreditation visit. That visit, a team of reviewers from APWA examines the agency's documentation and conducts interviews with selected agency staff. It may include interviews with the agency's chief elected and appointed officials and also members of the community. Township of Canton Municipal Services Department formally applied for accreditation in October of 2014, began the task of reviewing the 596 practices to determine the applicability, then ensuring the policies, procedures, processes were all documented. The agency's accreditation, APWA team completed that evaluation on November 6 through the 9th of this year. They came from Lenexa, Kansas, Shoreline, Washington, and Kansas City, Missouri. They awarded full accreditation to this department on November 25th of this year. It took many times a four-year period. This one took a little over three. Continuous improvement continues for four years, and we will again in 2021, looking at this agency and make sure that it can apply for accreditation. A total of 322 practices were reviewed, 321 in full compliance, and one in substantial compliance that is outstanding. Additionally, the agency is found to have one model practice, that's an agency's strategic plan. That model practice will be shared with other agencies and through the self-assessment process moving forward. This is an outstanding record. Director Tim Foss, Manager Kristi Jones, and the entire staff from the department are to be commended for all their efforts. Again, on behalf of the American Public Works Association, it is my pleasure to award the formal accreditation plaque to the Township of Canton, Michigan Municipal Services Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And if I could, Tim, could you please accept on behalf of Canton Township this evening officially from Mr. Benning? And the, please introduce your team members, Tim, if you could, that are with us this evening, because I know you guys have been working on this very, very hard for many years, and it's a lot, I mean, it's paid off. Well done. So, Tim, please. Go right ahead. Make your comments.
Yeah, thank you very much, Rich, and many thanks to APWA for all the support that we've had over the past three years. The team that we had on site was really good. But before I kind of give my spiel, I want our team to come up and actually accept the award on behalf of Municipal Services Department and the township. So if the core team could come up and our division managers that helped out in making this happen, that'd be great. Maybe you guys can come around to the side here. So Kristi Jones is our accreditation manager, Lori Poma, Secretary for, or Clerk for in Public Works, Bob Bellers, our Public Works Manager, Brad Lear, the Superintendent of Public Works, Jeff Goulet, and Bill Surcheck isn't coming up, but Bill, please come up. Rob Kramer's our building official. He is ill tonight, so he can't make it, and Amy Culligan is our communications specialist. But let me just reiterate things. Everybody knows I love a good graph, but I don't have a good graph for you tonight, but I just want to restate something that Rich said, and that is 321 of 322 practice standards, full compliance. That's an awesome, awesome, awesome result for the team. So, you know, each day, our staff diligently set out to design, inspect, plan, construct, operate, and maintain a whole host of both public and private infrastructure projects around the community. You know, whether we ultimately own those assets or whether they're privately owned assets, like some of the developments that are before the Township Board tonight, we are at that 100% of the time, every day. At times, that job can present itself with some very difficult challenges. But despite those challenges, we have also always maintained a leadership role regionally. Canton Township has been recognized for its planning, its building and inspection services, engineering services, and public work services for many, many years. So achieving this is really, you know, a big objective in kind of completing, completing that recognition. Our, you know, our overarching goal for accreditation was to be the best we can be, but we were really after three additional things through pursuing accreditation. One was to promote the overall community awareness of the important job that these people and all the staff in MSD have in making Canton a great community. And secondly, to achieve the recognition for the hard work that our staff do every day across a broad range of positions, from, you know, our senior division managers to our frontline staff that are out there in the field and the staff that are definitely in the office, very important to the operation. And then, thirdly, to join public safety, leisure services, you know, two other large departments of the organization that are already accredited through Kalia and through CAPRA respectively, and also the Finance and Budget Department, which annually meets the CAFRA requirements, you know, each and every year. So really joining that kind of elite level team that we've got here in the organization. Our organization through doing some research this weekend is one of nine in the United States and Canada that have municipal services, leisure services, public safety police, and meet the CAFRA requirements, you know, on the continent. That's nine. Once fire becomes accredited, I think that list is going to shrink substantially. We are one of only two in Michigan that are accredited. Again, another point that I just wanted to stress. Really, though, bottom line, achieving this accreditation gives me a tremendous sense of pride in the staff and tremendous sense of pride in the organization as a whole. So I'd like to thank both the past Township Board, the current Township Board, certainly the fellow colleagues that I mentioned along the north wall that represent the other departments, our core team, our managers, and definitely the 70-plus full-time staff that work in MSD in embracing continuous improvement. So on behalf of the department, thank you, Rich, and we look forward to the journey.
Well deserved. Congratulations. Well done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Tim, do we know where we're going to hang the plaque?
We actually have two.
Wonderful.
So one for Township Hall and one for Lori Poma.
Wonderful. Nice. Now it would be time for citizens' non-agenda items or comments, public comment. Is there anybody that would like to make comments on an item that is not on the agenda this evening? Is there anybody that would like to make public comment? Anybody like to make public comment? Okay, seeing none. Treasurer Slavens, could we make a motion to pay the bills?
Mr. Supervisor, I make the motion to pay bills.
Second. Those in favor of paying the bills this month, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Clerk Seagrist, if you could take us through the consent calendar in one motion.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as written with item C1, Authorization to Pay the Bills through the end of 2018, a regularly scheduled board meeting. Item C2, Appointments to the Culture, I'm sorry, the Commission for Culture, Arts, and Heritage, and that is for new appointments for Yvonne Alford, Elena Semenov, and John Melanix, and the reappointment of Ms. Summer Sakakini. Item C3, Consider Approval of the Performance Resolution and Application for the 2018 Annual MDOT Maintenance Permit. Item C4, which is to consider approval of the resolutions for three annual permits and authorization, authorizing the township clerk to sign for work, and those are for the Wayne County annual permits, I believe.
Second. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, moving on to the general calendar. First item on the agenda is accept and concur with the adoption of the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Update.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to remove from the table and consider the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Update. This is going to be.
Two motions?
It looks like two motions that I didn't catch before, I apologize.
Problem?
Yeah, I vote to remove from the table and consider the Comprehensive Plan Update and to accept and concur with the adoption of the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Update by the Planning Commission on November 20, 2012 pursuant to the requirements specified within Public Act 33 of 2008.
Second. In summary, Public Act 33 of 2008, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act provides procedures for adoption and amendments to local communities' master plant, master land use plan. The act also requires that the Planning Commission review and update the plan every five years. The Township Board authorized the Planning Commission to commence the evaluation and distribution of plan amendments on February 28, 2017, to the required governmental agencies and utility companies. A joint work session with the Planning Commission Township Board was held on June 19, 2017 to discuss overall objectives. This discussion focused on support of mixed land uses, preservation of open spaces, promotion of trail expansion and connectivity to create a more walkable community. The Planning Commission held the study session August 7, 2017 to discuss specific amendments to the plan and held public hearing on November 20 and adopted the plan presented to the board in this request to accept and concur with the Planning Commission's adoption of the updated comprehensive plan. Additionally, this is an item which has been before us previously. From that last session when we tabled, there was a request by Trusty Snyderman to do further review, which I think that those meetings did occur, Steve?
Yeah, just make a few comments on that?
Absolutely, please. This would be a good time to do that.
Sure, yes, since I was the one that made the motion to table, I did meet with the Municipal Services Team that was just in here, and I wanted to thank Tim Foss, Director Foss, and Jeff Goulet, along with the Chair of the Planning Commission, Greg Green, and our Township Attorney, Kristen Cobb, for meeting with me. We reviewed the master plan and in more detail, we went into on the six changes that are being requested in this motion. I do believe it shows the hard work and professionalism that the commission and the administrative team have put into this plan for Canton. Excuse me. I feel we, as a community, however, are getting frustrated with the constant expansion and development in what is becoming an overcrowded area of southeast Michigan. I felt at the time and hoped that the master plan could be a tool to help stem the tide of this growth. In going through it in more detail, I see now that it really cannot, to the extent I wanted it to, mainly due to precedent built up over the last 30 years and potential legal action against the township that makes most real, most effective changes prohibited. Of the six changes that are presented in this action item, I do see that two will have minimal increases in home density over on the west side of the township. The three mixed-use changes will be neutral in what possibly could be built out, and as was explained to me by Mr. Goulet, that the Oakwood site will potentially be a decrease in density versus the hospital that was originally changed, which I'm glad to see. I had hoped for more in the area of reducing the potential home build-out in this master plan update this year. And I also want to say that if it's the right thing to do, I am not against going to court to protect our community and keeping it a desirable place to live, but I also know our history in trying to win cases against developers and the current state of the law, which in my opinion sides heavily for those that build communities versus those that end up living in those communities. So I just want the people of Canton to know that I am frustrated too with not being able to change this as much as I had hoped, but at the very least, I want the Planning Commission, the zoning board, and the rest of our township to hear that there is a new tenor to this board in how it wants to approach and manage the growth in the community. I think we all need to be thinking how to ensure Canton stays a desirable and livable community, but with that said, I'll vote to approve this plan and move forward with trying to effect change with each individual project as they come up. So, thank you for meeting with me.
Any additional board comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
And carries. Thank you. That was all one motion there, Michael? It was wrapped into one, right?
I didn't hear if ever, I didn't hear the vote.
I saw Emery, aye. I saw John, aye. I saw, no? Okay, you voted aye in favor of the motion, yes?
Okay, so it's unanimous?
Yes is on this side, so I think we've gathered unanimous.
I thought you said I saw Emery's aye.
No, 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 no. I believe the vote was 7-0, sir. Does everybody disagree with that? 7-0, we're good. So it was unanimous, sir. Very good. Moving on, item G2. Consider first reading of an amendment to Appendix A, Zoning Code of Ordinances for Canton, Michigan Avenue Development Rezoning. We have with us Mr. Frank Jarboe, who is the plan owner. Questions? So.
This is going to be in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of the proposed amendment to Appendix A, zoning of the code of ordinance of the Charter Township of Canton as provided in the attached ordinance, which rezones all of parcel number, the parcel number listed and part of the other parcel number listed from C3 Regional Commercial District to LI, Light Industrial District, and rezone part of the additional parcel and the northern part of another parcel from LI, Light Industrial, to C3 Regional Commercial District as shown on the rezoning map in your packet.
Second. The applicant is proposing to rezone portions of several adjacent parcels, the subject property from and to different configuration of C3, Regional Commercial LI, LI Industrial District. The property is designated, as Clerk Seagrist has stated, as mixed use on the future land use map and the comprehensive plan. This allows consideration for C3 Regional Commercial, Light Industrial, and OI Office zoning. And in talking to Mr. Jarboe earlier, it's just basically flipping what the original plan was for the parcels around a little bit, but it's basically the same thing. We have Representative Jarboe here. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Jarboe? Mr. Jarboe, would you like to share with us very briefly what you're planning and would like to do with the property?
My name is Frank Jarboe from Semitary Management. That's okay. We're trying, the reason for the flip of the use is we're trying to utilize one of the buildings that's on the property to, for the retail use of the C3, and the rest would be the LI1 that we are trying to do. So we're basically meshing the two 10, the two five-acre parcels together and then splitting them off in two different developments, something that we feel that could, you know, try to use the building that's there.
What will be in between that white space and between what is there now and who?
That's a shared access in between. So it's only, so we're eliminating two curb cuts, I'm sorry, one curb cut and creating, it currently has two, actually has three curb cuts on Michigan Avenue, so we're going to just reduce that down to one, and that'd be a shared access for between the two different developments.
Any additional questions for Mr. Jarboe? Jarboe. Okay, seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye, the first motion.
Aye.
Okay, second motion.
Supervisor, I move to table consideration of the amendment for a second reading on January 23, 2018.
Second.
Those in favor of the second motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item G3. Thank you, Mr. Jarboe.
I'd just like to say congratulations to the township also. I've, this is our third development in the township. We've worked very closely with the planning, engineering, and the building department, and they've always been very professional with us. And not, we don't always agree, but we find a common ground, so it's a great community to work in, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item G3, Consider Approval of a Site Plan for Valvoline Quick Oil Change.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the resolution as follows. Resolution of the Board of Trustees, Charter Township of Canton, Site Plan for Valvoline Quick Oil Change, whereas the project sponsor, Mr. Zayed Al Baba, has requested site plan approval for Valvoline Quick Oil Change to be located on Michigan Avenue between Canton Center and Beck Roads on the identified tax parcel, and whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the site plan and made a recommendation to approve the request to grant site plan approval with conditions as summarized in the attached written analysis and recommendation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees, the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the request of the petitioner, Mr. Zayed Al Baba, to approve the site plan for the proposed Valvoline Quick Oil Change, subjects to any and all state and local development regulations and further, subject to any conditions recommended by the Planning Commission and staff as described in the analysis and recommendation attached here too and made a part hereof.
Good.
Do you need a second?
Second. Thank you. Trusty Snyderman for the second. The Board of Trustees again approved this, special land use for auto service at the meeting of July 25, 2017. The layout of the site is consistent with the concept plan previously reviewed. The building satisfies the ordinance standards for exterior materials. The applicant is requesting five additional parking spaces beyond that permitted by ordinance due to the anticipated overlap of employees arriving and departing from work. Due to the small size of the parcel, a portion of the required foundation landscaping has been relocated to the open space next to the basin rather than in the foundation of planning area. The Planning Commission again recommended approval of both requested modifications, and Mr. Zayed Al Baba is with us this evening. Does the board have any questions for our representative this evening?
Identify on the map there, Director Foss, the change?
The, which change, Steve? Sorry?
It's the spaces, right?
Yeah, well, we've added five additional parking spaces, and then there was some landscaping on the building that we moved to the common area.
They're in front of the building? Is that where they are?
To the, to the west side of the building.
Oh.
Well, this is an existing, this is the Science Drain along here, and then the larger retail plaza is to the west here. If you know the, if you're familiar with the site, existing Jimmy Johnson, I think it's a Verizon store, is on this parcel right here. So there'll be an interconnection here and then a new driveway out to Michigan Avenue over here at the west end of the site.
And so the spaces aren't on that diagram? They will be?
They're on, they are on this drawing, yes.
Oh.
They're all in the front.
They're all in the front? Okay. I thought we were eating into that swale on the, oh, okay. Thank you. Emery?
The Planning Commission, I mean, basically, we talked about the lighting at the entrance and some of the brick and the questions that we asked in the berm too, that was an important change too, like you said. So that was basically all we touched on in the Planning Commission before we passed it.
Comments or questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
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 Passed unanimously? Do we have a second motion? Or does that?
Nope.
G3. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item G4. Consider Approval of a Budget Amendment and Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Wayne County for the paving of Ridge Road.
All right. This is going to be in the form of two motions, and I will invert them from how they look in your packet so that the approval of the agreement occurs before the budget amendment. Supervisor, I move to approve the attached model resolution and the intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County and to authorize the Township Supervisor to sign the amendment on behalf of Canton Township.
Second. Summary, Singh Construction has recently completed the paving of approximately 1,200 feet of Ridge Road immediately north of Ford Road. After several years of discussion and negotiations with Wayne County, the Wayne County Executive Office has provided a firm commitment to share costs with Canton Township for the paving and drainage improvements along the remaining approximately 4,000 feet of Ridge Road from where Singh left off norl- Road from where Singh left off northerly to Warren. In December, Wayne County provided us with the draft of the intergovernmental agreement, which staff has reviewed and recommends to the board for approval with several minor edits to the document. The budget amendment is necessary, a budget amendment is necessary to appropriate the funds for the construction, the work and construction services. The funds will come from available fund balance set aside for capital improvements as well as monies received as a result of payoff from a special assessment district. We have with us Director Foss as well as Director Trumbull. Are there any questions? The board of comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the first motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so we have five, two, and we have the nays with, yeah, Treasurer Slavens and Trusty Graham Hudek. Very good. And we do have a second motion here.
Supervisor, I move to approve the budget amendment as follows. This is a doozy. An increase in the expenditures to the capital outlay road construction infrastructure account in the amount of $3,185,000. In the transfer out of capital projects account listed for $1 million. And an increase in expenditures to the transfer to fund balance account listed for, looks like negative $179,041. And then an increase expenditure to the transfer out of capital projects for $274,000. And then increases in revenues to the reimbursement from Wayne County in that account in the amount of $1,911,000. A transfer in the special assessment in the amount of $1 million. Transfer in community improvement to that account for $274,000. Fund balance appropriation of $820,959. And another fund balance appropriation from the other account in the amount of $274,000 to get us to zero.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a support that takes care of the accounting and where the funds are going to move to and from. Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Nay.
Here the previous, thank you very much. Moving on to item G five. G six, thank you, because we eliminated G five. Consider payment of City View annual software maintenance fees.
Supervisor, I move to authorize the payment to Harris Computer Systems for the City View annual software maintenance fees for a total not to exceed $54,760.34. The funds will be available in the 2018 budget in the accounts specified.
The only thing I'd like to add is the cost is shared among the different MSD divisions. Each year, new license files are issued, which allow the application to function until the specified expiration dates. The new license files are issued after payment of the ASM fee. The ASM cost for 2018 is increased by $2,072.36, which does represent a 4% increase. Are there any questions? The routine maintenance payments, okay, keeping things up. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G seven. Consider award purchase order contract to Interstate Security for swipe card access controls for the Municipal Services Department office suites.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award a purchase order contract to Interstate Security Incorporated of Shelby Township for an amount not to exceed $21,050 for the supply and installation of card swipe access controls for the Municipal Services Department office suites on second floor.
Second.
Remember, 2012, the township board approved a long-term service contract with Interstate Security for their systems. Since that time, most of the office doors in the administration building have been equipped with card swipe access controls. One of the last areas to have this added are nine existing office suite doors on the second floor. A capital budget amendment was approved late last year for 2018. To proceed with this work, the total cost of the equipment again is $21,000. Comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G eight. Consider the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 10, Article 3 of the Canton Code of Ordinances to specify duration of township license and further update the process and issuance of a license. And for the folks at home, this is the ordinance on amusement devices and arcades.
It's going to be in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold a first reading of an ordinance which amends Chapter 10, Article 3 of the Canton Code of Ordinances entitled "Amusement Devices and Arcades" to revise sections 10-91, 10-95, 10-99, 10-101, 10-102, and sections 10-121 through 10-129.
Summary, this, this is, and as well as the next couple ordinances we're going to be looking at, is simply a cleanup of existing ordinances to make sure that we align with the state. This one has not been updated in many years and did not require a certificate of occupancy as a precondition to obtain a license. The proposed amendment contains a number of cleanup items again to bring the ordinance in line with current practices. Are there any questions? On the board, go ahead.
One question. Who had supported that motion?
Stephen.
Thank you. I didn't hear out of my left ear.
What kind of?
Go ahead, Emery.
So, I looked through, you know, your changes and you made them, and I'm just wondering what the process is, if you, if there's an additional typo. Do you have to bring it back to us or no? I mean, it just, yeah, I didn't know that the, okay.
On a typo?
On a typo, but.
Where is that?
Yeah, it can be corrected before second reading.
Okay, we can change it before second reading if you want to talk to me after the meeting.
Okay, what, what is the typo or?
No, it just, you cross, it says for a license permit, it used to say permit, now it says for a license therefore, and it's.
What page are you on?
Page four. Section 10-122. I didn't know if it changed the meaning of the sentence or if it didn't matter.
10-122.
Section 10-122, page four, at the top.
Subsection A, are we in?
Yes.
Okay. Shall I read it out loud? To embarrass my own writing. Each owner desiring to have any device or arcade shall first make application to the clerk for a license therefore. Thank you very much. That is a.
Missing E is the issue?
Ah, or superfluous language.
Yeah, or do we need the word therefore? I don't know.
All right. I will consult with legal and prior to the second reading at the next board meeting, we will let you know if we will be removing that or if it is staying in there. Thank you.
You had a question?
I was just wondering what types of establishments we have in our community that fall under this? Like low golf or what?
Yeah, any, yeah, Chuck E. Cheese, any place that basically has mechanical devices, games within their premises.
Chuck E. Cheese?
Yeah, they're really throughout the township, so you got the Arctic Edge has coin-operated games, you've got Zap Zone on Ford Road, Chuck E. Cheese. So it's really any coin-operated amusement.
Soccer facility has, I won a couple balls.
Yep.
So anything that has a coin-operated type of game.
Crane machines, your, your pinball machines, those type of things.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item, oh, second motion.
Supervisor, I move to, I further move to table for consideration the proposed text amendment to the Code of Ordinances and to schedule a second reading for January 23rd, 2017.
Second.
In favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G nine, consider reading, first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 18, Article 7 of the Canton Code of Ordinances to specify duration of a township license and to further update the process for the issuance of a license. And for the folks at home, this is the smoking lounge ordinance that we're looking at.
Form of two motions as well. Mr. Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold a first reading of an ordinance which amends Chapter 18, Article 7 of the Canton Code of Ordinances entitled "Smoking Lounges" to revise sections 18-503 and 18-507.
Second.
Very good. This is being modified to prevent issues where we, we have occupancy before we've gone through processes. So since the initial passage of the lounge ordinance, townships has been in conflict with the state of Michigan over timing of the state township licenses for these businesses. Further, the ordinance did not require a certificate of occupancy as a precondition for issuance of the license. The pros, the proposed amendments would address both of these issues. Is there, are there any questions? Comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the first motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion, please.
All right. I further move to table for consideration the proposed text amendment to the Code of Ordinances and to schedule a second reading for January 23rd, 2017.
Second.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on, item G 10. Consider first reading of ordinance to amend Chapter 18 Canton Code of Ordinances to bring into ordinance, bring the ordinance into compliance with the state law and move responsibility for issuance of a business license from the building official to the township clerk. And this was the ordinance that relates to used car facilities.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold a first reading of an ordinance which amends Chapter 18, Article 5, Division 2 of the Canton Code of Ordinances entitled "Used Car Dealers" to revise sections 18-221, 18-222, and 18-224.
Second.
Summary, Chapter 18 of the Canton Code of Ordinances requires very business, various businesses to operate licenses, obtain licenses to operate in Canton Township, including used car sales. The amendment proposes various updates to bring the ordinance into compliance with state law, requires compliance with township ordinances, and changes to department issuing the license from the building inspection to the clerk's office. It's important to note that based on our current zoning, Director Foss has clarified that due to the road width requirement, the, the, the only place these facilities could possibly go in Canton Township today is along Michigan Avenue.
Correct. A number of years ago, the, the planning commission and board made that amendment to basically restrict the location where any kind of car dealership could be located to a road that has a right-of-way width of 210 feet or greater. And the only road in Canton that meets that criteria is Michigan Avenue.
Any board questions? Comments? Go ahead, Steve.
Is this, all these ordinances, is this part of the big stack of ordinances that the township attorney has taught? Oh, okay, so we're going to be doing this throughout the year probably?
Well, she did a great job over the holidays playing catch-up.
Okay.
We had a couple quiet days and we had a legal assistant who helped turn up. Dozens and dozens more to go, but.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to know what to expect, so.
High hitters that we've been focusing on for some time.
Good, okay, thanks.
If I may, for that matter, the 2018 budget, which was submitted by the previous clerk, had not anticipated that we would be amending as many ordinances as we are probably going to be amending this year. So keep that in mind when I come to you later for some money to pay for all these changes we're making.
Okay.
Find it somewhere else.
Well-oiled team here. Okay, those in favor of the first motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion, please.
Supervisor, I further move to table for consideration the proposed text amendment to the Code of Ordinances and to schedule a second reading for January 23rd, 2017.
Second.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Summer, your hand was blocking. Yes?
Hello, no.
Good, okay, wonderful, thank you. Item G 11. Consider first reading of ordinance to amend Chapter 78, Article 8 of the Canton Code of Ordinances to specify that cooperative apartments are part of the rental inspection program.
Supervisor, I move to introduce for first reading an ordinance which amends Chapter 78, Article 8 of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Summary, residential rental inspection ordinance has been updated a few times since it was originally passed in 2014 to address unforeseen issues that have arisen as the program has been implemented. One of the issues that has risen is related to cooperative housing units, which are a unique form of property ownership that is geared towards low-income housing, low-income individuals and families. The amendment proposes to specifically include cooperative housing units in the residential inspection program. And this has been an interesting one where there has been quite a bit of communication behind the scenes. What's an interesting point to make is one of the facilities in Canton has been part of this program for a few years and then was requesting to get out of the program. So for that, we are making this move. So are there any board questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead, Summer.
How many co-op facilities?
Yeah, this is the only one. And I think we also wanted to note for the public record that late yesterday about 4:30, we received 117 signed petitions from the residents of this particular cooperative housing asking to be removed from the rental inspection program.
Because it's owned by a corporation and corporation obviously, so they are technically considered rental.
And when, when the resident leaves the cooperative, they have no control over who comes in behind them. The corporation then takes over. So in many ways, it looks, feels, acts just like an apartment facility. The complex, when it was originally built, was pitched as an apartment complex. And the major rental inspection program took two cycles.
One of the reasons that we're really driving this home, for at least me personally, is the fact that we know there are some issues there that need to get resolved. And therefore, we need to make this change to make sure that happens for the safety of the residents.
So I'm just thinking of process, and if we're getting on a slippery slope here. So currently, we do not inspect homes or condominiums, correct?
Right.
Unless they're rented. And from what I understand, from my understanding of a cooperative is it's, it's run by also the, the people who live there. So it's, it's a committee. And from what I've read is that in order for people to live there, they have to pass through this committee and has to be approved. But from what you were saying, those letters that you received, I think we received them in our email too, didn't we?
Yes.
They're saying that they're owners. So are we, I mean, I'm all for safety and I'm all for even, I'm even for taking it a step further and looking at houses before they're sold. I mean, not going as far as Dearborn did, but just making sure that everything's safe. And my concern is that we either include all houses privately or, or we just do rental. And I don't know, I'm just wondering, can we really consider these rentals? That is my concern. Process, you know, legally, can we?
Yeah, that's, that's basically what our attorney has researched and confirmed that we can do. And other communities have done it, and maybe that's the, the other point of, of information. We researched what some of the other communities are doing, and there's others in the immediate metro Detroit area that included cooperative housing as part of the rental inspection program to kind of close the loophole that exists.
So, somebody's living there right now, and you're so, and when they leave, we're saying that when, before someone new comes in, we're going to inspect that unit and the building.
No.
No?
It'll be part of the normal respect, rental inspection program in routine. So we'll go through all the facilities and all the buildings every, what, two years?
It's, yeah, it's not a time of sale type of inspection. It's an inspection that occurs just on a fixed cycle. And one change that we made this past year was to create the incentive for the good property owners so that if they did have a, a good inspection, then they can get, get a pass for one inspection. then they can get a pass for one inspection cycle. So, this particular complex was inspected once two years ago. And then when we went in and inspected again more recently, we found pretty much the same list of violations that existed two years ago. So, they fixed a few things, but they didn't fix all the things that they should have fixed after the first inspection.
Are you finding these things in individual units?
Yes.
Okay, so these people are living here, and you come in every two years, even though they've been living there for six, and you say, "We're going to inspect your unit now," even though they say they're owners per their affidavit that they submitted to us?
Shareholders in a corporation.
Yeah, legally, they're shareholders, not property owners.
Technical, but yes, legally technical issues.
May I ask the nature of the violations?
Yeah.
I'm aware, yeah, I receive that information.
I have everything ranging from electrical work without permits, basement finishes without permits, faulty electrical outlets, bare wires exposed in the units, missing and broken handrails, exterior step defects, improper dryer vents, improper gas shut-off valves, missing smoke detectors, missing carbon monoxide detectors, sewage leaking inside of the buildings, in the basements primarily, and leaking water valves. And that's a bullet point list of thirty-six pages of violations from the last inspection.
Or multi-unit buildings, act.
That's correct. Usually, I think most of them in there are three- and four-unit buildings.
Well, I don't want people living with those issues. I mean, that could be a dangerous situation. So, I think in one way or another, inspections need to happen. With homes and condos, I think we rely on the banks usually. In terms of a sale, there's always an inspection. And if this is not an official condo or home, then that inspection won't happen. So, there, I mean, I don't care which way we inspect, but it has to be done one way or another. And I don't think it happens when there's a sale, whatever a sale means in this situation. So, I mean, I think that it's important that things like that get fixed if there's an issue. So, it, for me, it sounds reasonable to be doing this. If they want to change to condos somehow, then they would no longer be under this ordinance, correct, Director Foss?
Yeah, that's correct. And every, you know, they'd have to basically replat the entire thing so that each property owner would get a tax bill. Right now, you know, nobody gets a tax bill.
Just the corporation gets the tax.
Right, they get the exemptions, some of the state exemptions that are allowed under the law, but they don't formally get a tax bill.
Pardon me for my ignorance, but do they have the ability to sell their unit if they choose to leave?
It's managed, the sale's managed through the association.
So, they sell it back to the association?
Sell the shares.
Okay, okay, so they really do own an interest in the whole? They don't own their actual unit?
That's correct.
How do we handle apartment buildings when they're rented? If somebody moves out of a rented apartment, do we inspect the whole building or just that unit?
We don't inspect it until it comes up on the next cycle. So, again, same thing, there's not like a time of sale or a time of release inspection, but there's an inspection as part of the regular cycle.
And do we charge one fee for the whole building? Or do we charge a fee for each unit?
Two-part fee for the multi-unit buildings. There's a two-hundred-dollar fee for the building itself, and that includes like the common areas, stairwells, maybe gathering areas in some circumstances, and then sixty dollars per unit. So, these units would be three hundred and eighty to four hundred and forty dollars for their once-every-two-year required inspection.
If they successfully pass inspection, we leave them alone for four years. That's part of what we changed recently in this ordinance because this was drafted in 2014 because we had a very large corporation that create, was creating slums in Canton Township. And we had safety issues. That's why this ordinance was created. And the, I forgot where I was going to go with the point, but the punchline is if we want to have this, it's a known to have violations today, we need to modify this language to allow them to remain in the inspection program to make sure that the facility is safe for the residents. That's the goal here. Go ahead, Mike.
All right, once we have completed this issue and the other motion on, under this item, I was, I would ask if the supervisor would think it would be appropriate to enter into the public record the petitions we received on behalf of these residents? I know nobody showed up tonight to talk about this, but I thought this might be appropriate.
Absolutely, please do enter that into the official.
We had letters also, right? I mean, we had the petition, but we also got letters.
We did get letters. The letters are, they're, the letters are form letter that accompany the exact name of the individual. I was, I was trying to be mindful of adding a hundred and seventeen additional pages into the minutes since the name is on the petition. Would it be appropriate to enter in?
Be just one letter because it has a lot more verbiage in that one.
Summary document.
Okay.
You have a summary document, so that covers it.
But, yeah, they said a lot in those letters, they're like a page.
So, that would, all right, I will make a motion to include one letter and then the attached petitions, but that's not, okay.
Does that conclude comments? Very good. Those in favor of the first motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Those opposed? Seeing none.
Supervisor, I further move to table for consideration the proposed text amendment to the Code of Ordinances and schedule a second reading for January twenty-third, 2017.
Second. In favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board enter into public record the petitions, citizen petition to amend Section twenty, seventy-eight dash two eight, two eighty C of the Canton Township ordinances submitted by the residents of Canterbury Muse along with one of the letters from the residents.
In favor of the third motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item G twelve is our final item this evening. Consider first reading of an ordinance, an ordinance to amend Chapter ninety-eight of the Canton Code of Ordinances to bring the ordinance into compliance with state law and further to increase the size of the planning commission to nine commission members.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to introduce for first reading an ordinance which amends Chapter ninety-eight of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
Summary, Chapter ninety-eight, Canton Code of Ordinances entitled Planning Still Cities, the Rural Zoning Act, which was repealed and replaced by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act in 2008. Discussions about the makeup of the planning commission have led to a review of the township ordinances governing the planning commission. While Section twenty-eight oh three of the zoning ordinance was updated when the state planning law was changed in 2008, however, Chapter ninety-eight was not revised as the board has indicated desired to increase the size of the planning commission to nine members. Chapter ninety-eight has been reviewed and updates made to bring the ordinance into compliance with the current law, as well as an increase the size by adding two members. A budget impact of three to four thousand dollars will be addressed by future requests for board action if this amendment is approved this evening. Are there any questions, comments? Okay, very good. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I further move to table for consideration the proposed text amendment to the Code of Ordinances and to schedule a second reading for January twenty-third, 2018.
In favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to a conclusion of this evening's agenda. I see no public for public comment. The only comment I would like to make, and we have next Monday, January fifteenth, is the Martin Luther King Celebration at Cherry Hill Village Theater that begins at summer six-thirty with program at seven. I think the doors open. And I have seen bits and pieces of the program. Looks like it's going to be a fun evening. Michael and Anne Marie will be singing. Well, that's price of ticket right there.
For the front row, too.
And her voice will be billowing out into the space of the village theater, so.
So, next Monday, six-thirty PM, Canton, come on out. Help us celebrate Martin Luther King's.
By the way, you can still go to the last practice if you want to join the choir.
John, how's your singing? How's your baritone? Do you have a room for a baritone? John's answering his phone right now. Sounds off to him.
Sorry for interrupting.
Okay, are there any other board comments?
Oh, I just noticed something. Every one of the secondary motions, the date I was saying aloud was January twenty-third, 2017, it is in fact 2018, so.
Writing motion to revise all your dates to 2018 to reflect the calendar? Is that required, or?
I just want everyone to acknowledge that we were establishing these readings for the next board meeting, which is going to be this January, January twenty-third, 2018. I hope that there's unanimous consent that that was the intent.
Wow, good catch, we all went through those packets, and none of us caught that.
I'll be working on a time machine to go back to January twenty-third, seventeen.
Wow.
Copy and paste.
Okay. Any other board comments? Seeing none, any staff comments? Team, very good. Call for motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone, thank you.